Will not be canvassing today.
Okay.
Maybe Christmas.
That's the other election.
Oh. They don't count tomorrow. You doing good?
Can y'all hear me? Mic check?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Great. I'm doing well. Thank you.
So looking ahead, do we need to go to exec tonight?
That's a bad question. No, no.
That's gonna get said no. Okay. Well, I mean, it's it's open for anybody else, but I just, you know.
I'm certainly available and ready, but I mean, during my report, if y'all have anything non-executive that I don't cover, please feel free to ask.
It's not Mike Wilson of the Beach Boys on us, is it? No.
Hi, Mayor Pro Tim. Can you hear me okay?
Very great. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I think we're all here. I have seven o'clock on my clock, so if y'all are ready, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the House of the City Council for Monday, November ninth. Call the call a meeting to order at 7:00 PM. We do have a quorum. Everybody's here. Mayor Pro Tim, you mind moving to center prayer?
Not at all. Holy Father, we thank you for the opportunity once again to safely meet and represent the interests of the citizens of Haslett and the agenda item before us. We ask for you to give us wisdom and as we address each one of these. We also ask that you be with our staff, our first responders, our teachers, and our citizens this month, especially during the pandemic. Christ name, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So participation comments, did we have any ahead of time, Ms. Diana?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay, I'd like to take this opportunity to afford anybody in the audience the the opportunity at this time to have up to three minutes to say anything that you'd like to say. I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell us what your address is, please. And I'll be quiet for about 10 or 15 seconds and see if anybody wants to take us up on this. Okay, I hear none. We'll go on to the next item. Next item's canvas and direct and declare results of the November 3, 2020 special measure election.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tarrant County Elections has advised us that they are still in the process of counting provisional votes. I had an update today that the city of Haslett had about 150 of those, way more than what I thought we would. And so as soon as Tarrant County lets us know when we can have the final results, we will need to have a very short special meeting. The city attorney reminded me that we only have to have a quorum of two in order to canvass the election. And the last date, we're hoping we can do that Friday or we had all talked about Monday and Tuesday via email. And I I think, though, that we need to try to do it this Friday if I have the number. So I'll be sending you all some information to see who is available to to help us out with that.
So even without the numbers, we can go ahead and schedule that meeting with the 72-hour lead time, correct?
Yes, I mean, yes, sir. We just I'll prepare agendas for several different dates and I'll hang them up. And then if we don't have the information, I'll just let you know in advance that we won't be having that meeting. I'll just have to. And I hate to do it that way, but I, you know, I don't see any other way. It's not considered an emergency. So we do have to have the 72 hours advance notice.
Yeah, it's kind of a shame because if 150 is the number, even if all 150 votes went against the item, it would still pass, but we don't have the official results. So we're kind of stuck and I appreciate everybody's flexibility and trying to get this done whenever Diana gets the information. And any questions or comments about that? And if and if anybody has any issues where you're not available Friday, Monday, or Tuesday ahead of time, I guess if you could let Diane know, that would probably help her in her scheduling. Number five items of community interest. Five A, the city of Haslett earns the distinguished budget presentation award for the fifth year. Jim, is anybody going to talk about that?
Marcy is being recognized for all her work five years in a row. And Marcy, you want to say anything? You did a great job. I mean, we got a winning streak going.
No, just thanks to everybody, all the department heads, Mr. Quinn, Diana, and tech support and everything else to help get that all put together and get it put to bed. And about to publish the next one and hopefully it'll win another one.
Well, congratulations on 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 your success. We all appreciate having you here for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for all your all the support of the council, too.
I'm going to stick an item in here. Let's make it five A plus. And that's just a reminder that the brush day is this coming Saturday from eight to noon behind the fire station. And if that's not correct, somebody can can correct me, but I think that's right. Is it not Travis this this Saturday?
I think that's correct. I'm looking right now.
Okay. While you're looking there, I'll just go to the next item. Five B, city offices and library are closed November 26 through the 28th for the Thanksgiving holiday. And that ends, I believe, our items of community interest. I know I saw it on the calendar for this Saturday. So Travis, if you find something to the contrary, for sure, correct me, you know, so we'll get that information out.
Yeah, okay.
Number six, monthly reports. Anybody have any questions or comments about any of the monthly reports? Hearing none, let's go to seven staff.
I I do.
Go ahead.
The economic development report about the I-35 frontage. Dad, you mentioned that we're getting a lot of interest now all of a sudden, but that a lot of it is for.
100% of it is logistics right now.
Yeah, okay.
Lot of phone calls. And I've I've been working with Wes on this. We inform them about our future land use plan. Some may continue to press forward with their desires to continue the logistics that are happening south of us in Fort Worth along the frontage. But again, that's not our plan. That's not the plan y'all have adopted, and we do not take a position. We just tell them the method to go through if they want to pursue that through P and Z.
Can you refresh our memories about what what we do have in mind for that area?
Right now, that area and Wes, do you, I mean, you're so new, I don't want to throw you under the bus. We've talked about right now, the future land use plan shows that all is general commercial. That could be office uses. It could be retail. It could be local services. It's probably more areas, you know, designated that way than will go, but the concern this office has and has had for some time is if the logistics go first, it could impede the other things that the city would like to see long term. So again, we're we're not recommending a rush to make any changes in that area.
Is there anything proactive that we can do? I mean, that we're not already doing. I know what I know you're working diligently toward that. Is there is there any any other proactive thing we can do? Do we need to put a billboard up here that says restaurants welcome or we eat in Haslett?
We can always do those things, but no, there's a lot of proactive things going. To be consistent, I've always said, you know, we need to be let this work, let the roads come in, let the, you know, those end dates start to show up so people can see what's going on. Caraway's growing, La Terra's growing, those that residential is coming in that will attract those things that we've, you know, had on our wish list for quite some time. So no, we're I remain very proactive in those. We have one potential commercial, but it's very early. And again, that was working with Brett Pedego, but that's the only one right now, and it's on one of those hard corners we've talked about. So I know I'm very proactive in it. The road has just been a mechanism to hopefully bring those things forward. But I did expect logistics to be the fast and easy. I mean, it's it's easy money right now. But again, has its location. My belief is if y'all ever decide to change that and say logistics could be permitted, I've got about 10 people I could call in would happen in a week. So there's no rush to allow those things that are not listed in your future land use plan. So Wes, I didn't throw you under the bus. I just talked right over.
Thank you both. I know. I know this is really high on both of your priorities, but thank you both.
Anything else? Have any anyone else have anything on any of the monthly reports? Okay, let's go to number seven. Seven A, update on the coronavirus COVID-19 issues.
Chief Childers, we had a little meeting this morning about this, so he has chief maze. I'm sorry.
Well, you had a flashback there.
She was my police chief for 20 years. When I say chief, I got a fight not saying Childers. All right, Kurt, get the report.
All righty. Well, we're still operating in phase two. I don't see any changes to the business hours or work schedules anytime soon. And all departments are reporting no issues. As you probably know, the COVID numbers are increasing along with hospitalization. The public health director is becoming very concerned, and we'll probably learn more about that on the Tarrant County judge call this Wednesday. Just a summary of the numbers for the last couple of months that I've been reporting to y'all. In September, we only had three positive cases in the city, 17 in our county area we cover, and we had eight recovered in the city. And remember, all those recovered are always just the city. I don't know who recovers in the county. On in October, we increased to 15 in the city, 34 in the county, and six recovered. Already in November, we have 11 in the city, seven in the county, and two recovered. The best news is we still don't have any deaths in Haslett. And also, some of those numbers is when it affects a household, then we start to see typically, I'll see one come in. And then a couple of days later, you can tell the rest of the family's gotten sick and those numbers come in. So these aren't all necessarily all new households as it could be affecting multiple people in a house. But either way, the numbers are are increasing. So it has severely affected the Saginaw Fire Department. Their their staff got sick and they had to shut down the fire station. Unfortunately, that's the one that's on Halleway 156 that helps us. But the Fort Worth Fire Chiefs stepped up and said they would staff an engine at the Saginaw Fire Station until those people are cleared back to work all the way on the 18th. So I've been reassured that, again, Saginaw is our main player in mutual aid to us in the city if we have a fire or other large-scale event. And the Fort Worth Chief said he would just deal with the politics of that, but if that's what Saginaw was supposed to do, then they're going to do it. So that was kind of relief on my end, making sure they're coming. But I just want to throw this in there. This is just another huge benefit for down the future when we have the staffing that allows to contract with Fort Worth in the future. This is again, something that, as we like to say, Big Brother can offer. So kudos to Fort Worth for helping out. Back to Haslett, court will continue to be held via Zoom through the end of the year. The city has used all of the cares money, and Marcy will be closing that out at the end of this month or at the end of the October one essentially. So that should be about finished. Is there anything, Marcy, that you need to say about the COVID money?
No, I think that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, and that's been a it's been a good deal, and we've we've gotten some items that we desperately needed. All right. And then the last thing I have is Rob, you have an update on the in-person meetings.
Rob is not in in the meeting at this time. He's in.
Okay, Rob is in Bridgeport.
Yes. They're finished.
Mayor Golden or Jim, do y'all know anything?
No, not really. I mean, they're mindful of the cases that are increasing in Tarrant County, and we still have split public works groups just to make sure that we have public work service. And I think everyone's pretty comfortable with the 10 to three, and, you know, a lot of people are working eight to five. So and we don't, I don't think we've gotten a lot of traffic through City Hall. Most of the traffic we get are public works employees or fire department employees. They're all tested anyways. I think we're good.
Okay, well, I can't imagine with the numbers going up that they would be changing the teleconference anytime soon. So all right, that's into my report.
I've got a question for you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Your meetings, has there been any strategy or is there any strategy being developed on how the vaccine is actually going to to get out at the at the county and city level? Do you have any insight on that at all?
There's not been any movement of recent. You know, we submitted how many people we would need that would potentially need the vaccine. But, you know, I think a lot of people are skeptical to always try that new vaccine till they really kind of know what the side effects may be from it. But so as of now, I do not know a date or time, other than they had just gathered how many we might need.
So I it was kind of a loaded question. I was watching the network news right before I turned this on, and they they announced that in the in the in the whatever it is, third level testing they're doing on the Pfizer vaccine. That it's it's operating somewhere in the neighborhood of 90% effective. That's right up there with measles and mumps and those other vaccines that not, you know, a lot better than a typical flu vaccine. So at least the initial report is is really good, and they're hoping to have something on the streets for some folks by the end of this month or early next month is what I took from the news tonight, Kurt.
Okay.
The real reason I was asking is obviously the the strategy has been discussed at some point, and it's leaked out in the press. And I think, you know, EMS personnel and anybody that I don't know if we want to use essential or vital, but EMS personnel at the top of the list, so police, fire, hospital folks, that kind of thing. And then I think the next group that was mentioned was was the people most at risk, so the 65 and older or whatever that cutoff is. And then I guess somewhere in there, people that have underlying conditions probably should have access. And I'm not trying to dictate, but those are some of the guidelines that I've heard offered up. So any of us old folks that want to stick our toe in the water, I feel pretty comfortable if they've got a 90% and if FDA approves it, just me talking personally. Anybody else have anything on COVID? Sorry to ramble away there. Seven B, annual report from the Metport Chamber of Commerce is. Somebody here from the chamber? I don't I don't see identification anyway.
No, sorry. It was primarily just written. Sorry, Jim. I didn't mean to talk.
Okay, I'm sorry. Typically, somebody would show up. So, okay, fine. So we have that in writing. And and anybody have any questions or comments about the chamber report? Then the Alliance Texas Hass of Accessibility Improvement Project Monthly Report for October 2020.
I am prepared to speak to this topic at length.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll try and keep it short. I'll skip over the first part of this since that is all the bill grant is taking care of. If you skip to the second page, project finance update, the tax increment financing, and actually go one deeper into your packet for the October update. And actually, you know, these always kind of split the month. November 3, Tarrant County Commissioners voted unanimously to participate in our tax increment financing district. So we will have their help to pay off that debt to COG. I do have an in-person meeting this week. It's the briefing with the Tarrant County College Board on the 12th to present it to the the board, the trustees. We're hopeful this the new person who is over this for the college is very receptive. Again, Susan is a an ex assistant city manager in Fort Worth, knows the value of tax increment financing districts and what they can do. If that meeting goes well, and Petty and Associates will be there with me presenting, we would go to November 19, the full board at 6:00 PM to for them to consider a participation agreement. And again, this would just simply share the cost of the construction and repaying that 6.9 million across three entities if they were to participate, pay it off much quicker. And then all the taxing entities would get the full tax benefit going forward. So the the hope is there that we will get that support. If you skip over down a couple to the PED blackout, we did receive the $706,000 from Tarrant County. And Marcy, I think that check, did you say that went out last week?
Yes, it did.
We have reimbursed TechStop for the blackout period. I reached out to Mike Glitzio with Tarrant County, formerly with COG. And they are processing the remainder of those payments up to the 1.3 million cap on that in our local agreement. In a quarter, they have them broken out quarterly, so we'll see that next one hopefully around the end of November or first of December. And we will begin using those funds to pay back the pay back the general fund amount that was spent during that blackout period to keep the project going. Over time, we believe we know that the general fund will be made whole. We're hoping that at least some of the funds that Tyface spent during that blackout period will also be reimbursed. So again, the order was TechStop had to be paid first, general fund made whole, and then whatever's left, we can reimburse the Tyface corporation for their funds. If you move down to the construction update, I had a correction. I was having a bit of a my weekly panic attack over our schedule. We've always been working against the management plan that needed this project under construction by January. Jeff Neal with COG updated me and said the obligation agreement with TechStop, which we are not a part of, actually gives us in 60 days past a January to start date. So there is a little bit of flex. We're not needing it, but the partners we work with and some of those other entities seem to be trying to eat up that time. We've done everything within this deadline, or at least close enough that we have not caused any delays. The gas lines may be an issue. We have to wait for certain things to happen for that to be reimbursable according to TechStop. So just know that that has changed a little bit. We always expected a January start date. And that may still occur, but we have until March 2 for that construction to begin and still be within the build. And Travis was in a meeting last week where the contractor that is working the 170, which also got this project or will get this contract, is ready to go now and would like to start moving dirt across the highway to store for this project. Our project needs a lot of dirt. And on the other side, as they're working the bridges, they actually need to get rid of dirt. So we're working with those partners to try and see if we can't make something happen there. Under the advanced funding agreement, we always anticipated there would be a second amendment. Until this last week, we were notified that the original construction advanced funding agreement is going to be canceled. I'm not aware if that has actually occurred by TechStop. I think there's language in there where we all have to agree to it. But they said it would be much cleaner and the preferred method to get the Regional Transportation Commission and COG as third parties to pay for any overages and fix those other things we've discussed, the 500,000 regional toll revenue, the budget and the Tarrant County money, it's easier to just start over. So they're currently crafting a new AFA, and we're waiting or providing input on the budget right now for that. The project was awarded October 29, but again, until that AFA is completed and we actually transfer money, which we have not done, they cannot sign that contract. I'm not comfortable transferring $5 million of Haslett taxpayer money until we know that our maximum that we always said we were going to do is what's going to get the project built. So again, that's that cushion is being eaten up a little bit, but we're continuing to work diligently with partners to get there. Environmental assessment, there's nothing there. That is done. All Phase One right of way is recorded. The only issue in Phase One now is trying to get the gas lines out of the way. All Phase Two title updates have been completed. Working with Travis, we're going to look real quick. We're trying to take a very quick look at the 156 intersection. We don't want to purchase anything. Certainly, we don't want to condemn anything that is not absolutely required for the project. So if drainage easement could be converted to a temporary construction easement, our plan is to do that so that we're not buying something and then having surplus land that we just don't need for the project. So we're working through that very quickly. Again, with that extension possible to March 2. I've talked to Rob about it because the updated appraisal he wants for the possible condemnation is they are five to six weeks out. And that's as soon as we release them once we know about the survey. So everybody's moving a little slowly in this area. If you skip down to the private gas line improvements, that's the one that's the biggest concern for us right now. Permian Express Partners, they slid that said it was going to start work on November 9. They are now going to start November 15. They're still well within the timeframe. Barnett Gathering XTO is the challenge. They've committed to us. They will be out of the way by December 31. But TechStop has stated if we don't have plans that they've reviewed and a reimbursement agreement that they also agree to before that work is completed, they will not consider this for reimbursement. Again, per the ILA and the bill grant, we're capped. I don't expect the city of Haslett to need to put more money in here. But we want to make sure we're doing everything that is expected of us by the partners where we can. So there's a push there between getting the gas line done in time and getting it done in a manner that gets reimbursed. So we've asked TechStop for guidance. I'll answer any questions you may have. I know I ramble on. It's a big project and a lot moving always.
Any questions or comments for that?
Yes. I do. I just want to make sure I heard you right. The updated appraisals on those outstanding, the right of ways that we might have to condemn, it's six weeks out?
They are giving me a timeline of five to six weeks to do an update appraisal. I am pushing hard. I am pushing hard right now to either use different appraisers or for them to shorten that timeline. That's just. We've used this one for the original appraisal, so typically it's easier and faster. Everybody's busy right now. Everybody's leaving the the. West Coast and the East Coast and moving here and the appraisers are just extremely busy apparently. So we're pressing hard. They're not required for the condemnation. Rob just prefers them, so we want to do what we can to accommodate that.
Okay, but do we have time? If it if it truly does take six weeks. Do we, does that give us enough time to do what we need to do? I mean, I thought all they had to do was basically update them since they did them six months ago.
It was almost a year, but it's still, that was my impression as well, council member, that it would be a fairly. Easy process to look and see if anything major had occurred in the area. Apparently, they're just so busy. Again, I constantly press them, but right now I'm hearing five to six weeks. With a little cushion and the way things are going, as long as we can get the AFA executed and the project underway, I think we'll be fine, council member. But I am also concerned about the timing and I will continue to communicate that with Rob since he would be the one handling those connotations if they occur.
Thank you. Thank you. And on the the new AFA with the text dot at all. We think we'll have that for our December meeting or we thinking? I mean, the last time we tried to get a updated document from text data, it was several months, but they they are the one kind of leading this. This plan, right? Do you think they'll get that to us? Time for us to really give it a good, good look over?
It will certainly be reviewed by Rob. My hope is that we will have it by December. I've told them that we have one meeting in December. A text dot is now the grant recipient and implementing agency. So if it fails, it fails on them. And I really don't believe that that they want a twenty million dollar failure. Because they couldn't get an AFA out. I I believe strongly that they are working diligently to get this item done.
I'm sure you're right. Thank you so much. I really appreciate these these details. Mayor, your mic's off.
Does the sixty day extension that we got? Does that affect at all the the right of way, rights of way that are supposed to be acquired by April one? Does that, does that slide also? Any feel on that?
They, per the management plan, mayor, it would not slide, but it certainly doesn't put pressure on us to to finish that. We're just going to continue to work as diligently as we can within the management plan we've been given. Again, we know it's there. We try not to use it. That's kind of the way we've been all along and that's helped us hit the deadlines.
Good. Anybody else? Okay, let's run on down to the consent agenda. We have three items. Eight A is approval of the October nineteenth, twenty twenty regular city council meeting minutes. Eight B is accept a correction permanent drainage easement for parcel eight V D E. Related to the Alliance Texas Hassle Accessibility Improvement Project and authorize the city administrator to sign the same. And eight C proving a participation agreement between the city of Haslett and Tarrant County regarding the county's participation. And Haslett reinvestment zone number one related to the financing. Of Alliance Texas Hassle Accessibility Improvement Project and authorize the city administrator to sign same. Anybody have any questions, comments, corrections to anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would consider a motion.
This is Councilor Morrow. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mayor Protem.
I heard Mayor Protem first. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hilborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Number nine, public hearings ordinances and action items nine A. Hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a request for a final plat of lot one, block one, Haslett Middle School Edition. The proposed plat is in the Coleman Boyd survey abstract number two two five. In the city of Haslett, Tarrant County, Texas, and located on the east side of John Day Road and south of Abindale Haslett Road. The subject property is in the agriculture AZ zoning district. This is going to be Wes's first crack at us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a proposed single platform, one single lot for a middle school. The engineering plans and the site plan have both been approved. And the plat meets the requirements of the city pass the ordinance as well as local government. Planning and zoning commission voted a unanimous recommendation supported this. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any, any questions or comments at this point from for Wes? And anybody from the district want to say anything at this time?
If you needed anything from, we're here in case you need anything from us.
Okay, fine. Thank you. This time I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this final plat for the Haslett Middle School Edition. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration and action on the recommendation from P and Z. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mayor Protem. I know these approval of final flats, I think expire. And I'm wondering, is there an expiration date on this? Because remember when we were considering that preliminary plat? It was said that. You know, pending the bond. Approval, it would, it would start like right away. So now that it's going to be a delay. Is that an issue with approval of this final platter? Do we need to somehow extend the expiration date or? If there is even.
Mayor, this is Rob. Mayor, this is Rob, Rob Alabon. Can you, can you, first of all, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I joined right as you were making the motion and the vote on the on the consent agenda. So if you'd like, I can try and field the mayor of Protem's question.
Please do. Go ahead.
Okay, so Mayor Protem, you're correct. It, there's a concern with expiration of of preliminary plats. But on on final plats, once if they're approved, once they're approved, they're they're in place and there is no expiration on them. So. You know, if this final plant meets all the city's requirements. And then it's, first of all, as you, as you all are well familiar with, it's a ministerial act to 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 approve it, but. Once the final plan is approved, there is no expiration date on it. It's approved and it's reported in the deed records and. And and there is no expiration date on.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Tim McClure, could I ask you, this is the mayor, could I ask you to go ahead and recoup part of the conversation you and I had today to to give this the district's position? On the on the yay or nay coming out of that vote and hopefully in May?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. As we discussed earlier today, Mayor, we are currently, I'm actually. On a board meeting call on the other screen and on your city council call at the same time. So. We're in the process of visiting with the board on what the next steps are. I would say that we anticipate. I don't want to, you know, call it before we we say it, but we anticipate that we will go back out in May. We know our middle school capacities are very rapidly reaching their max. And so this is, this is a need for us moving forward. Whether it's May or somewhere beyond May. The plans are in place. We had actually taken bids before the election so that we were ready to go after the election. We have since canceled those bids. I will, I'm happy to say those bids were all within budget. We were very pleased with the with the number of bids we got and the and the amounts. And so we basically are taking that project and really working through some, I think there's some final little details with you and some of city staff. Some final comments to pick up and we're ready to send those right back out here in a few months, pending a May election.
And anybody have any questions or comments for any of the speakers we've had with regard to this item? Okay, how about? How's everybody feel about this item then? If 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 nobody has any questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, this is Mayor Protem. I move to approve the final plat of lot one, block one, Haslett Middle School Edition.
Is there a second?
Jessica Clark seconds.
Jessica seconds. Any further discussion? Still a roll call vote. Warren, Rob?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hilborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passes unanimously. Nine B. You're welcome, Tim. Public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a replat of lot one, block A, Musilla Valley Transportation Edition. And an additional approximate one point three seven acres into lot one R, block A, Musilla Valley Transportation Edition. The proposed replat is in the B Lavio survey abstract number nine nine one. In the city of Haslett, Tarrant County, Texas, and located on the south side of Westport Parkway and west of Harmon Road. The subject property is in the industrial I zoning district and within the Alliance Airport overlay A A O. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. The property, this is a replat before you tonight. Total acreage on the property now with the addition of the one point three seven acres would make it a twing one point three acre lot. Previously on this property, a variance for sidewalks adjacent to Westport has been approved. Part of this request, the applicant is requesting a variance for the portion of. The property that butts butts Harmon Road for sidewalk variance as well. Plans have been approved, our engineering plans have been approved and TIA has been accepted by the city engineer. Staff recommends approval of the requested variance due to the. Rough proportionality test for the sidewalk. P and Z recommended approval unanimously of both the plat and the variance as requested. I can answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Wes at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this replat as described? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on to discussion, consideration and action on the recommendation from P and Z. Any questions or comments from anybody?
Yes, Mayor Protem again. Are there any reps from Musilla Valley on the call?
This is Dave Crystal. I'm working on behalf of the developer. We're the design build contractor that applies for the replat.
Okay, I just, I just got a comment. It was a real pleasure looking at the all the detailed plans for this replat. Because most of you don't remember, but as was mentioned, this is a replay. The first plat that was on there, probably only Harold and the mayor and I were around at the time because it's been quite a few years ago. And as I recall, the owner was. Professional engineer as well. So he liked to do his own plans. And they weren't necessarily as detailed as we had. Come to be accustomed to. So I was, I was real happy to see that. They took our advice and are offered at the time to go out and get a real professional job. Someone who does this all the time instead of part time. I I see it's changed quite a bit. But it's still. You know, it's still what it is, but. That's what it's zoned for. So it looks to me like they've done a pretty good job of trying to make it look as best as it can. I'm, I'm, I'm not quite sure that I understand and maybe Wes can explain. How the traffic moves in and out of this facility and what the improvements are to Harmon Road. So I'll shut up and listen now.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I may have to lean on Travis a little bit for this. I know he reviewed the T I A. I do know the T I A called for a signal, but I may, Travis, if you don't mind. Enter them.
Sure. So the traffic impact analysis, there's eight signal warrants that can be, that can trigger a signal. And when applying a background, background traffic to it, it did show that that warrant was met. One of the warrants was met. So they have submitted plans for a signal. That if you know that corner, it's kind of a blind corner there. So there'll be a warning, a warning sign for the signal. But we didn't want trucks, if they're returning left, to clear four lanes of traffic to get over to Intermodal, say. So. I believe the applicant said that most of the trucks would be turning right and going towards I thirty-five, but in the event that there is a left turn there. Harmon Road will be reconstructed all the way from. Westport up to their drive entrance. So they are constructing the full section of Harmon Road. And that's the extent of the improvement zone.
So is there a primary entrance or is it the second entrance or the first entrance? From.
Yeah, I will.
North going south on Harmon?
Yeah, that's a great point to bring up. The primary entrance for truck traffic is going to be the southern entrance. The northern entrance is more for car traffic, which is closer to the car parking lot. And actually, the gate to the truck parking lot on the northern entrance is not going to be open. That's going to be a fire only access. So it's going to have a breakaway fence in the case of an emergency. But the southern access point is the primary one.
Is that true for outbound traffic as well?
Correct.
So I saw that there'll be no right turn sign there for trucks. So left turns. Then is that where is that center part, third lane that you're going to put in there for? Turning traffic? Did I visualize that right?
I think the middle lane is actually a suicide lane on Harmon. But most trucks will just wait to turn left onto Harmon. We don't envision any trucks going south, which is why we're putting that sign there. You start to get into some, you just start getting away from the main expressway if you head south down there. So to answer your question, we would be open to making that a turn lane, but I don't think the traffic study warranted it.
Okay.
There is three lanes. There is a three lane improvement to Harmon.
Okay, good. Thanks. I thought that's what I was saying, but I wasn't sure. I saw that the. Two, two lanes on the north end were left hand and right hand turn lanes. So that's.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about this? Are we ready for a motion?
Actually, Mayor, this is Rob. I did have a comment written down that, and maybe I missed it in the presentation. But there was a sidewalk variance. I missed it in the presentation, but there was a sidewalk variance. And is that some, that's something that we need to include in our motion, I would think, if that, if that's still needed?
Yes, sir. That, that's part of the, that's part of the suggested motion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Mayor Pro Tim. I, I can recall we granted this in the previous plat of this property. So Mayor, I'll, I'll move to approve their replat of Lot 1 Block A, Musilla Valley Transportation Addition, and an additional approximately 1.37 acres into Lot 1 R Block A, Musilla Valley Transportation of this addition, and the variance to Section 3.9 sidewalks and shared use pass as presented.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that motion?
Hillborn, second.
Hillborn, seconds. And any further discussion? Hearing none. I'll do roll call vote. Warren Robb?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Nine C, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act on a request for approval of a site plan for Lot 1 R Block A, Musilla Valley Transportation Subdivision, which is an approximate, an approximate 21.317 acre parcel in the I Industrial Zoning District within the Alliance Airport Overlay, AAO, located on the west side of Harmon Road and south of Westport Parkway. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, this is a site plan for the final plat that you just approved. The property is planned, just as we've already discussed, to be a truck terminal, which is allowed by RIG in the industrial zoning district. As you well know, variances have been approved for sidewalks along Westport and Harmon Road. During the public hearing and review from Planning and Zoning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval with three conditions. Those conditions would be one, that a guard fact that was shown on the site plan be removed at the entrance. That has been removed. The second one was to install a no right turn sign for Harmon Road that has been placed on, a note has been placed on the site plan before each night. And then the third one was that truck parking, or the truck parking lot, the lighting shall be motion censored and not set on, in lieu of time clock settings. All those notes have been added to the site plan you have before you. And as I stated, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote. I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions at this time for Wes? At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this site plan as presented? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Onto discussion, consideration, and action on the recommendation of P&amp;Z. Questions, comments?
Mayor, I have a question. Since the, the requirements of the P&amp;Z have been met in the site plan we have, do we need to mention them in any way? Or should we say something like as presented tonight?
Good question, and I'm going to defer to Rob Alabon if he's on here.
Yeah, I, I'll, you know, if Wes has any input, I'll, I'm, I'm open to that, but I think since those items have been addressed, I think you can just approve what, what's been presented tonight. If it makes you have a comfort level, you can, you can re-address those, those items, but I think since they've been addressed, you don't really need to. You can just approve it unless Wes or Jim has a different opinion on that.
Jim?
I would agree. No, I would agree completely.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Does that, does that answer your question then, Trish?
Yes, sir. And I'm ready to make a motion if, if we're ready.
All right.
Okay, I move, we approve the plat, the site plan package for Lot 1 R Block A, Musilla Valley Transportation Subdivision as presented.
Is there a second?
Tanya Morrow, I'll second.
Tanya, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Warren Robb?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Nine D.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. Looking forward to it.
Appreciate it. Okay, nine D, discuss, consider an act to approve ordinance 031-2020, amending Section 2.08.003 of Chapter 2, Animal Control of the Hazlet Code of Ordinances Regarding Contact the Owner of an Impounded Animal. So is this Rob doing this or Jim?
No, Rob wrote the ordinance. It's Rob's deal.
Mayor and council, I, I put this ordinance together per the, the comments or request from Councilmember Hillborn. It's a, a pretty simple ordinance that just makes the little tweak in that language to require that the, that the animal control officer make an attempt not only to see if the, to check if the animal is, has a rabies vaccination tag, but also to check microchip, for microchip, you know, to try to determine the owner. And I'll let Councilmember Hillborn speak to this. I, I think that's what she was asking for y'all to consider. And if, if that, if that hit the mark on what she was asking for, the ordinance is, is a, is really a very simple, just a word change to our existing language. And I'll pitch it to Councilmember Hillborn at this point.
Caught it. Thank you very much, Rob. This is exactly what I asked for, and I, I really appreciate the council considering this. I think most of the animals that I see that are loose have flipped their collar, if they ever even had one. I talked to our animal control, the owner of the animal control company, and he assured me that every one of his trucks that goes out is equipped with a microchip reader, and that's the first thing they do when they catch an animal. So I think this would be a great service to help our, our residents, you know, reconnect with their, with their babies if they get out. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments about the, the ordinance? Hearing none. I'd entertain a motion then.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to make the motion. I move to approve ordinance 031-2020 as presented.
Is there a second?
Jessica Clark, second.
Jessica, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Warren Robb?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. Nine E, discuss, consider an act regarding development fee schedule.
That will be me, Mayor. During a routine review of fees, I've discovered the 1% engineering inspection fee was not being charged. And it's regretful. We had in 2015 raised the construction inspection from 3% to 1%. So the question became, when we, we discovered this, is, I think Rob and I discussed this at length, was that 1% fee reasonable? And there were, there is some going back and forth regarding whether those fees were reasonable for the city engineer in-house to review some plans for, you know, $20,000. So Wes is here, and Wes was given the assignment to research the, the fees of surrounding cities in the state of Texas and determine where they're reasonable. So I think Wes is going to give you a report.
Thank you. Um, yes, thank you. Jim asked me to just kind of do some research on other cities, primarily, obviously, cities that have an in-house city engineer and what, what those fees look like from their perspective. Real short, not, I mean, it's a lot of detailed information, but I surveyed about 11 cities, and I would say five of those have a similar fee schedule that we have when it comes to subdivision plan review. I did not find that ours were just completely out of the ordinary from those other cities. The one thing I would say, if I had to say there was anything a little bit different, was that there were a lot of the cities, I shouldn't say a lot, probably four of the 11, maybe five of the 11, now looking at the report, either charged inspection or plan review and not both. But still, when it came down to percentages and the, the actual numbers, and we looked at some actual cost of what it would cost if we, if some of our same developments that we have today went into another city, and in some cases we were cheaper, some cases we were, on average, the same. So I, I don't know, Jim, did you want me to go in any more detail or?
No. So what, what we're saying here is our 1% is not that out of line, that we're charging for engineering plan review within our city engineer. So it's recommended that we keep the 1%, we don't reallocate it, we don't reduce it. We have begun charging the 1%. Wes has a plan to make sure that we never do this again, and he explained it to me this afternoon, and it looks like a very good plan he has, so we catch all these things as they're occurring.
This is the mayor, and I, I would concur with y'all's recommendation. In one of my discussions that I'd had in the last couple of weeks regarding this item, one of the, one of the theories offered up for how we came about to, to come upon this, or to, to draw up this 1% infrastructure plan review, was possibly in the past, not even the, the most recent engineer, not, not Travis, not their engineer before that, but one before that, might have been overwhelmed. And, and what we did as a city was contract outside the city for the infrastructure plan review fee. And if, if what we're hearing is, is that's, that's what's, you know, being charged in, in cities that have their own city engineer as opposed to the contracting that, it makes me feel even more comfortable that we're in line with what everybody else is doing. So I would echo the recommendation from staff to, to keep everything like it is. I guess there, there has been some kind of notification to those folks that we're dealing with on a daily basis when, when the fees go up a whole percent here in, in the last month or so, when we, when we reinstated this. Is that safe to say?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we will do that. There is subsequent developer comes in. Letera had no issue with their 1% fee. If there was going to be any developer that would have any issue, it would be them. So we're going to notify everybody, we're simply implementing the fees that we have. We're not increasing fees, we just never collected that fee. So there's, therefore, we're not, there's no action to be taken on 9E if we're just going to maintain that one there, if you all want to reduce it or reallocate it. But is everybody okay with the plan?
Yeah, I think I've stated my position. Does anybody have, you want me to rephrase it the opposite way? Does any council member have an issue with just continuing with it, with what we have already structured? I, I don't see anybody raising an issue, Jim, so if no action needed, we'll, we'll just continue what we're doing. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Nine F, discuss, consider an act to approve ordinance 033-2020, repealing Section 6.02.016 of the Code of Ordinances and Articles 6.000F and Article 4.200 of Appendix A Fee Schedule relating to fee for hazardous material disposal vouchers and residential trash collection rates.
That will be Diana.
Ms. Diana, to you. I'm not hearing you.
I can hear you, Diana.
Yeah, none of us can. Your mic's green, but we're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. The ordinance before you is to remove wording that refers to the old household hazardous waste voucher program that we had. That was, that wording was included in our ordinances, and it is no longer valid since we have the porch pickup and e-waste program now. And so that's the first part of it, just to remove that wording and also repeal the wording in the fee schedule that refers to that voucher fee. And then we are also just correcting the fee schedule to reflect the current residential trash in household hazardous waste porch pickup program fee.
Any questions or comments for Diana on this? If everybody's ready, I would entertain a motion then.
This is Councilmember Morrow. I move to approve ordinance 033-2020 as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Hillborn?
Trish Hillborn, seconds. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Warren Robb?
Hi.
Harold Williams?
Hi.
Jessica Clark?
Hi.
Patricia Hillborn?
Hi.
Tanya Morrow?
Hi.
Thank you. Motion passed unanimously. Nine G, discuss, consider an act upon advertising for bids for the 2021 Capital Improvement Project Reconstruction of the Hazlet Park Subdivision Streets. Travis?
Good evening. Just quickly, I did confirm that brush drop-off is this weekend, and I made myself available to help, help public work. So that's just going back. This project is found in the strategic plan and the capital improvement plan, where the remainder of the streets in Hazlet Park are scheduled for replacement during this budget year. The first third of the streets were replaced in 2018 with roller compacted concrete. Roller compacted concrete removes the steel, the most costlyest part of the concrete. So to take advantage of these price efficiencies, Hazlet is recommending utilizing the process again for the remainder of the streets. That said, the roller compacted concrete process is a very specialized process. There's very few contractors that can actually do it across the US. So there's a low turnout of bidders in 2018. So staff is proposing an alternate bid of traditional concrete and an alternate, to the alternate of using steel rebar or glass fiber reinforced rebar. The glass fiber reinforced rebar is much lighter, much easier to work with, and provides the same level of strength in the concrete. The, the hope is there that the traditional concrete bidders will see roller compacted on, on there and bring their prices down to, to be in the same range. That would, that would create, you know, competition among contractors and, and get the city the best price. The lesson, most, like, most, all of the lessons learned from the first project have been incorporated into these plans. The biggest thing is being survey control on the project, making sure that that crown doesn't wander throughout the street. And then the, just adding some additional notes to the plans and, and putting a more emphasis on contractors' work. So this would go out, if approved, would go advertised on this Thursday and the following Thursday. It would be, the bid would open on December 17th, and the bid could be awarded at the first January council meeting. With that, I'll ask, open up questions.
So are we giving people the option of bidding the project any one of three different ways then? Is that correct?
Correct. The bid form is set up such that the main bid is roller compacted concrete. The alternate bid is traditional concrete. And in the traditional concrete, you can select steel or reinforced fiber rebar. And there's just a checkbox to as to which one is there. That way we know for when it, when it comes time for construction. There is, even with the roller compacted concrete, there is a, a section at the end of Berry, no, yes, I believe Berry, where there's a, there's a turnaround. I can't remember if that's Berry or Schreiber, but there's a turnaround. And because the roller compacted concrete machine drives in a straight line, it couldn't be paved that turnaround. So there is, even with the roller compacted option, there is traditional concrete on the project.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Travis? So from a, from a weather and temperature So from a weather and temperature standpoint, Travis, we can do this anytime? Or are we looking for a set range of temperatures?
One of the recommendations from the lessons learned was to do it and not such a hot time of year, especially given that the batch plant is usually located offsite. So by awarding it in January, we'll be looking at a springtime where the temperatures are a lot cooler, the concrete remains a little bit more workable. So that's one of the recommendations from the lessons learned from the last project.
Anybody else with questions or comments? Okay, I would entertain, I'm ready to entertain a motion then.
This is Clark. I move we approve the advertisement of listing bids for the 2021 Capital Improvement Project Reconstruction of Hazlet Park subdivision street.
Is there a second?
Jim, second.
Second. Warren can have it.
Okay, any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren Robb.
Hi.
Harold Williams.
Hi.
Jessica Clark.
Hi.
Tricia Hillborne.
Hi.
Tanya Morrow.
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. 9H, discuss, consider an act upon a park board recommendation for placement of the new Christmas tree.
All right. This was from the park board last month. Council will recall that a commercial Christmas tree was approved. And with that, it's a much larger tree than what's currently there. Then brainstorming Christmas ideas, moving the Christmas tree location from next to the highway over to near the pavilion would provide for people to be able to drive up, socially distancing viewing the tree from their vehicles. We would have the little FM broadcasting station over there. And then in the future, that's kind of the ultimate location for Christmas in the park, because that's where all the choirs are. There's a lot more room to work with over that way. So the drawback is there's not power right now that could power all of Christmas in the park. So that's a long-term plan over there, and we're working on something for that. But for this specific item, the new commercial Christmas tree could be moved over there. There's enough power for that, and also to power the little radio station. So staff recommends placing the new Christmas tree near the covered pavilion. Open it up for questions.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim. Is this that new giant Christmas tree that takes a crane to assemble?
It actually, basically, yes. It assembles with the, it assembles with the same bucket that we assemble the other tree with. And, but once you put it up once, all the rings nest inside each other. So it's pretty easy to put it up every year.
Yeah, wait to see it.
Just a month away, inside of a month. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll move we approve the park board's recommendation to move the new Christmas tree near the covered pavilion in community park.
Is there a second?
Tanya Morrow, I'll second.
Tanya, seconds. Any further discussion? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren Robb.
Hi.
Harold Williams.
Hi.
Jessica Clark.
Hi.
Tricia Hillborne.
Hi.
Tanya Morrow.
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. 9I, discuss, consider an act upon a parks board recommendation for Christmas decoration placement.
All right, this is out of that same Parks Board meeting. They were discussing Christmas and what could be done there. And someone's had thought that they had heard that they were not, that their recommendation was not going to be decorating Gamal Park due to COVID and the need for social distancing. So a motion was made to allow for 50% of the normal decorations to be placed, and for those to be placed further apart than normal in Gamal Park. So the tree would be over in community, the decorations in Gamal Park, so it would stretch the event a little bit. The wrapping of the large pecan tree that took place this year, they had already voted, or I'm sorry, last year, they had already voted to spend that money again this year, so that money is spent. So they also recommended lighting up that tree. I believe there was a question about the health of the tree and whether you can wrap it with lights, and we did run that by the arborist. That tree is under the care of an arborist right now, and there was no issue with that. So the recommendation for, from staff is to allow placement of 50% of the wireframe decorations and the wrapping of the large pecan tree.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, if we're ready, we'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I move we approve the request to place 50% of the wireframe decorations in Gamal Park and the wrapping of the large pecan tree.
Is there a second?
Clark, second.
Discussion. So can I ask the question? I'm assuming, based on what I think I heard, we're saying 50% just so people can social distance from whatever we do put up? Is that the theme for doing that, Travis?
Right. So where the decorations are normally right next to each other, it would basically create a space in between, so every other, every other wireframe would go up.
Okay.
As part of the discussion, Mayor, I'd like to thank Travis for checking in with the arborist about this tree.
Okay. I think we do have a motion and a second. I interrupted our discussion. Any further discussion now? Let's do a roll call vote. Warren Robb.
Hi.
Harold Williams.
Hi.
Jessica Clark.
Hi.
Tricia Hillborne.
Hi.
Tanya Morrow.
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. 9J, discuss, consider an act to approve the city council meeting schedule for calendar year 20, it says 2020 here, I think it should be 2021.
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. It should be for 2021. Oops. I lost my page, just one second here. So this has become the standard that we bring to city council, the calendar year's schedule, so that you have the opportunity to review it and approve it. And of course, it is always subject to change by council action. You may have noted there are three Tuesday meetings, which that is because the Monday prior is a holiday observed on those dates. And then again in November and December, we're planning for one meeting, one council meeting on the second Monday. And we recommend that council approves this schedule as presented.
Any questions or comments about the proposed calendar? Looks pretty consistent with what we've been doing. Hearing no comments, I would entertain a motion to approve it.
This is Tanya Morrow. I move to approve the city council meeting schedule for calendar year 2021 as presented.
Is there a second?
Clark, second.
Clark, seconds. Sometimes these seconds are really hard to get. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Warren Robb.
I could keep chiming in, but I don't want to hog it all, so I'm going to vote aye.
Thank you. Harold Williams.
Hi.
Jessica Clark.
Hi.
Tricia Hillborne.
Hi.
Tanya Morrow.
Hi.
Motion passed unanimously. 9K, discuss, consider an act to excuse mayor and council absences, if any. Anybody have an absence that they want to announce coming forward?
Just a reminder.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, just as a reminder, I will probably be missing our December meeting.
Is it even, I'm not sure I can do this. Do you have a delivery date that you could share?
Yes, the expected due date is December 6th, but we're looking at possibly a little bit sooner than that, so.
December 6th, okay. Well, good luck on that.
Thank you.
Number 10, receive report from Public Improvement District Subcommittee.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council again. This is Rob. I would report that the Subcommittee met on October 22nd with the LaTerra representatives regarding their proposal to develop the LaPrell Trust property, which is south of the existing LaTerra development and west of the railroad tracks. We scheduled the Subcommittee meeting, had discussions with them. The developer expressed a desire to treat this proposed, they're calling this LaTerra South, is what they want to call it. They expressed a desire to treat that as an expansion of the existing LaTerra development under the same development rules and under the same existing PID structure, which you all will recall was a bond issuance PID. The Subcommittee responded to them that basically we were not interested in pursuing that under the same PID structure as the existing LaTerra. We're happy to discuss establishing a new PID for that new development, which would be a reimbursement or cash flow PID, as we've been doing with every other PID since the original LaTerra development, and to negotiate a development agreement for that territory. So that's really about as far as that meeting went, and I think the ball's in their court to digest that and determine, you know, where they want to go and what they want to do. If they want to continue meeting with us and discussing those things, we'll be more than happy to schedule more Subcommittee meetings and start working on that development and appropriate development agreement and PID plan to accomplish that. But I'll try and field any questions y'all have, or actually, the Subcommittee members, if you want to add anything to that, or Jim, please feel free to do so.
Anybody, the Subcommittee have anything you want to add?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tim. Just one reminder. It was only because the council in 2006, I think it was, approved this bond PID reimbursement or financing agreement rather than reimbursing, financing agreement. That's the only reason that we felt like that needed to be done for LaTerra this time. So since they promised, we didn't want to go back on the word of what the council had said on behalf of the city. So, but ever since then, all the ones we've done are cash flow PIDs. And to go change that, you know, we, you know, for one developer over others, or in some in the future, we just didn't feel like that would be a good precedent to set. So that's why we said, no, you're going to have to, you're going to have to come back with another way to finance this if you're going to get anywhere with us. So, go ahead, Jim.
Well, I was going to say, they had straight streets, and we told them to work with the development plan to make the streets.
And I will only add that Warren and Rob summed it up very well.
Well, my two cents worth is I'm really glad we went ahead with our plans on John Day Road. Anybody else have any questions or comments regarding the PIT Subcommittee? Hearing none, I don't think we have a need to go to executive session. Does any council member need to go to executive session for anything? Okay, we'll skip that. We'll go to 12, consider take action. There won't be any, because we didn't go to exec. Anybody have anything for future agendas? Hearing none, we're adjourned at 8:24.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Have a nice Thanksgiving.
Jess will be thinking about it. Good luck.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanks. Have a good night.
Bye.